Good morning, everybody. We'll call this morning's meeting to order. First thing is the approval of the agenda, and we have one addition.
Move approval with addition.
Second.
Giving a motion, second, to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that will move on to employee recognitions. Today, we got four of them, two of them with 15 years, and we'll start off with Nicole Erickson, working for the attorney's office that's 15 years in. That's you, Nicole. Congratulations on 15 years with the county. Thank you for being here.
Oh, yeah. So Nikki's been with our office for 15 years. She works in the victim witness services department and works with a lot of people that are going usually through hard times, and so she is somebody who is very reliable to help people navigate the court system, help them hopefully get to a point where they feel that they're, you know, as whole as they can be, but she's always dealing with a lot of people that are sometimes very difficult to deal with, and she is just an expert at kind of working with them and making them feel better, and so we appreciate everything she does, and thanks for 15 years.
Thank you.
Excellent. James, you've done a lot for the 15 years you've been here, and congratulations on that, your 15 years.
Thank you.
Fifteen good years for us. Steve, did you want to?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I could just say a few words, just wanted to.
Don't run away, Ray.
You know, we're fortunate. James is an innovative leader. He is constantly researching and looking at data to provide the best services and programming for the youth that we serve. He works closely with Rhonda in social services and Janelle to make sure not only just the needs as a whole, but specifically to Clay County are being met. In addition to that, he's not just our local leader, but he works on the state level to ensure that the needs of the state and facilities are being treated fairly. He's hardworking, dedicated, and we're fortunate to have him here at Clay County. Thank you.
Thank you very much, James. And we'll move up to 25 years, Cheryl Sapp. Seen her around for many times. Thanks for being here. Congratulations there, Cheryl.
Thank you very much.
She didn't bring any needles today.
Yeah.
Just talking to it. Okay. All right, so we're very thankful for Cheryl's 25 years with us. She started in 1998 as a child and teen checkup coordinator. Over the years, she's worked as an adult health programs, as a case manager, provided school nursing for a couple of the K-12 districts. When public health provided nursing services to the juvenile detention center, Cheryl filled in as a backup nurse, was involved with emergency preparedness over the years, also coordinated the medical reserve corps program for the West Central Region, received recognition in 2006 from the U.S. Surgeon General and the Director of the Medical Reserve Corps for the efforts in this region, involved with immunization program for many years, and currently serves as the Public Health Clinic Coordinator and Disease Prevention and Control Coordinator. So on behalf of Kathy and myself, we would like to thank Cheryl for all of her years of dedication and service to the citizens and our communities. Congratulations on 25 years.
Thank you.
Did you miss anything, Cheryl?
The longer you're here, the longer.
And then also with 25 years, Gail Burnside. Congratulations, Gail.
Well, this is the favorite part of my job, getting to come up here and introduce and bring all the wonderful people who work in social services in front of all of you people. Gail started as an intern in 1998 in the Child Protection Department, and she worked in both assessment and ongoing case management under Rhonda for several years in that area. In 2012, she moved into her current position as our Child Foster Care Licensor, where she's been ever since. Gail plays an extremely invaluable role in the foster care system within our county and region. She recruits and trains all of our non-relative foster families, and she provides ongoing support to them, and she assists with all placements too, for out-of-home placement. So, thank you, Gail, very much. Everything you do, it's invaluable. We appreciate you. Your clinical skills are amazing, and you're a great social worker. Thank you for all of your time here at the county.
With that, we'll go on to with citizens to be heard. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak with items that are not on the agenda and beyond the computer?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we'll move on to approval of the payment of bills and vouchers.
I'll say move.
Second.
You're going to motion a second to approve the bills and vouchers. All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes for November 14th.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second for that. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I forgot to mention that Jenny will not be at today's meeting unless she can show up for the sick child. First thing on the agenda is to request to approve the hire of Solid Waste Office Manager, Corey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know or may know, when we opened the transfer station a year ago, we had this position in the budget, or a position in the budget, and I elected to hold off when we hired it, just to see what we exactly needed. Since we've opened in February, it's become apparent that we need somebody who can manage our books, do our filing and that kind of stuff, as well as run the RRC when I'm not there. So today, I'm here to request the approval of an office manager. This would come with a backfill position as we would promote Ashley to office manager, and we would need a skilled position filled after that, so. Any questions?
No, we discussed this at the PICA meeting last Tuesday and decided to, felt that this position was needed. It's been in the budget now for a while and just haven't filled it. Any questions on it or discussions?
Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval for this, a request for a solid waste office manager with backfill.
Second.
Will there be backfill involved there?
Yes.
Probably, okay, very good.
More than likely.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, request to approve the fill of welfare fraud investigator position in social services. Rhonda?
I have Sandy Thorne with me here today, supervisor in our Child Fraud and Collections Unit, and we are asking approval to replace a employee who is retiring after 32 years with the county. Jim Bachland has decided to retire at the end of the year. So we are requesting to fill his position as a welfare fraud investigator. We'd be requesting the motion to include backfill should there be any internal interest, and I can let Sandy talk a little bit about the position.
So in Clay County, we have two welfare fraud investigators, and we're subsidized by a state grant that pays 125% of the positions, and then the rest is paid 50% by the county and 50% by federal financial participation dollars. Clay County is one of the busiest outstate counties there is in investigating fraud, and now that a lot of the waivers from COVID have been lifted, we're finding that our caseload is increasing on a pretty regular basis, and so I feel that two positions is still needed in Clay County to meet the need.
What was lifted from COVID? What didn't they do during COVID?
There were a lot of waivers placed on financial assistance programs where people were not, if they didn't comply with different things, they didn't lose their benefits, they didn't have to renew benefits, that type of thing. And the last waiver, I believe, was the medical, and that is just in the process of being lifted now.
Okay. Yes.
Just out of curiosity, do these investigations result in criminal prosecution or loss of benefits, or do we get recovery of funds that have been forwarded, or all of the above?
All of the above.
What kind of qualifications are you looking for in investigator?
We're looking for, we're just rewriting that, either post-certified or associate's degree with five to eight years of investigative experience, or bachelor's degree in criminology or a like field with three to five years of investigative experience.
Do we have that type of people on our staff?
I don't know.
Is there some people with those qualifications on our staff?
Yeah, possibly.
Okay, very good, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sandy, I'm sure it's not going to be easy to replace somebody who's been around for 32 years and has the knowledge that Jim has, and hopefully you can send him congratulations on behalf of us for his retirement and thank him for all the work that he's done. I, in terms of the request here and the grade and the step, are you confident that you can hire somebody at step one?
It really depends on who applies and where, you know, if they're internal and moving up, if they're external, but come in with a whole lot of experience, we might be back before you ask them to go a little higher.
All right.
And the person, who's the other fraud investigator right now?
Adam Krabunoff.
Oh, yeah, okay, and good name.
Relative?
I don't know. Anyway, how long has that person been with you in this position? Roughly.
At least 10 years.
I was going to say at least. Okay, quite a bit, okay. I was just wondering if we're building into something or if it was two new people, so.
Oh, no, no, Adam has a lot of experience, and he does a lot of our criminal work, so very experienced.
Thank you.
And he's a former law enforcement.
Mr. Chair, this position is needed and beneficial to the county and the state and the federal government to make sure that everything goes as supposed to be. So I would move the hiring of the, replacing the position with backfill if necessary.
Second.
We've got a motion, second, to approve the hiring of the welfare fraud investigator position with backfill. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we'll find out what all those little gifts are that Roy was handing out. Request to approve the use of a multi-factor authentication hardware tokens.
Yes. Morning, Commissioners. Today, we're going to be discussing the use of hardware multi-factor authentication tokens. In front of you, you should have a little key fob, and if you press the button on it, it generates a code. So the issue we're running into is Microsoft is now decommissioning the use of text authentication and phone call authentication for, so when you sign into your email or your computer, normally you get that prompt on your phone, you'd say approve, or you get a text message, and you could type in that code onto the screen. So Microsoft is eliminating that, and in favor of it, one of the options is these one-time password tokens. So today, we're proposing, we came to PICA, what was proposed at PICA was staff could purchase for $15, purchase this, use, if they refuse to use their personal cellphone, would be one option that was proposed. The other option would be the county would provide it. So really, the decision today is decide which direction we want to go. If you have any questions on how it all works, please let me know here, and we can.
So is this mostly for mobile apps or?
So on your cellphone, you could use the mobile app, that's a software token. This is what you have in front of you is a hardware token, so just two different options for the same thing. So you type in your password, and then you have to do the second phase of authentication, which is type in that code or press the approve on your cellphone. So the issue we're running into is staff don't always like to use their personal phone for work purposes, so this would be an option to get by that.
So it would be downloading an app onto your phone from the same outfit that does this?
Yeah, you could either use the downloaded app on your personal phone, or staff could either be provided one of these or purchase one of these to avoid using their personal phones.
What's the concern over use of personal phones?
It varies. Things we've been hearing from staff are just, they want to keep work and personal separate, security concerns, you name it, there's a plethora of different reasons.
Under what circumstances are personal phones used for county business?
This would mainly just be for the authentication piece, so other than that, a personal phone wouldn't be used unless they want to check their email on their phone, their personal phone as well. But even if they're just using county equipment to check their email, they would still need a second phase of authentication.
And, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Campbell, Rory, the other piece is for those employees that have the capability of working remotely, they would have to have some form of authentication in order to do that.
Yes, correct.
So people that work remotely, do they have separate phones for work?
It depends on the position. Some positions are provided a cellphone, some are not, but I'd say the majority of the county do not have county-issued cellphones.
Okay, so the majority would be using their phone as perhaps I use my phone?
Right.
So just saying, then 24/7, I'll need this with me?
Right, or you leave it at work, and the only time you check your emails is when you're at work. But if you want to authenticate outside of work, you're going to need one of these tokens.
Steve, you're going to need one of these.
I can use my phone.
And the tricky part, so example, like our criminal justice departments, the jail specifically, there's some staff where they can't bring their personal cellphone in. So that's another hurdle, is then do we provide that, or does the county provide that, or do we still require the employee to purchase that?
So Rory, what are you recommending?
It's, we could go either way. It's, the easiest thing, in my opinion, is to just purchase them. They're about $15 to $25 apiece, but hold some accountability to the staff too, otherwise it kind of snowballs into, okay, one person doesn't want it, now everybody in that unit or department doesn't want it. So it's, it could go either way. It's hard to determine how it's going to play out.
Mr. Chair, if we are requiring this, and we have people that can't bring their cellphone into their work environment, I think it's a moderate expense, just part of doing business, and I'll make a motion that we approve the use of this system and purchase enough of them to meet whatever demand we get from our personnel to supply them.
I'll second it for discussion.
And I will mention too that this is a non-budgeted item, since it just came up from Microsoft as a requirement, so this could be something I would just, I could purchase out of my funds, but I might maybe over slightly on my budget for that line item.
If I can, Mr. Chair, can you walk me through, so I only have one phone?
Yep.
And when would I need to use this?
If you didn't want to use your cellphone for that multi-factor authentication prompt.
So what would create the need for the multi, what would I do on here that would require that multi?
Not specifically on your phone, but say your laptop. You brought it home, you logged in, checked your email, it would pop up and ask you for your.
Like I did this morning, on here, it said, "Check your phone."
Correct, yep, yep. So instead of using your phone to approve that, you could use this token, which would give you the code, and you type that into the screen.
So it's really nothing that you're actually doing on your phone that requires the number? It's what you're doing on a laptop?
Correct, yep.
So, if I may, a follow-up, so it's not me checking my county email?
It could be. I mean, there's that, some people have county email on their personal phones as well, so if they were to open an Outlook app, and, you know, every 30 days or so, it's going to ask you to authenticate, it'll pop up and you say approve or.
But you wouldn't need this?
Yeah.
If you want to use your cellphone, you don't need that at all. This would just be for staff with personal phones that do not want to use their personal phone to authenticate.
Or who were required by workplace rules not to have a personal phone.
Correct, yep.
So to go to the motion, we would have approximately 600 and some people needing to get these?
Not necessarily. Some staff are okay with using their personal device, so the number is unknown at this time. Just to give you an idea, 100 of these, we received a quote, it's about 1,400, 1,500 bucks for 100 of them. It's not a huge expense, but we're just looking for a direction to take on how to proceed going forward.
Rory, how long do they, will each of these last?
Depending on use, a year or two. And if the decision was made to go where staff purchased these, the auditor's office has assured me they can set up a revenue account where we could dump the money in, and if they return them, we could issue them a check.
Do you, have you estimated how many might, how many would you order in your first?
We just, initial batch, we would just start with 100, and, you know, as we start running out, we would just order more.
Are these clothes washer?
I don't think they're sealed. That's the thing, yeah, if one gets damaged or lost, I mean, you know, that's an additional cost to the county too, if that's the direction you take.
I guess that's what we've got to come up to, if one is lost and not, do we charge for the additional one then?
Yeah, we do that with our ID badges now. You know, the first ones provided for free, substantial ones are $10 after.
I think that might be something that we might want to consider within the motion, and maybe to amend that motion too. And I guess, Mr. Chair, that's good, and I would like to amend the motion to say that the first one, the county will provide, and if it's, something is lost or something, then the second one there would be a, what would you think would be an appropriate amount?
We could do $15. That's about the 15 or 20.
What's our cost?
About 15.
I would say, I would say this, an additional one would cost $10. I would make that amendment.
I would accept that amendment in the motion if.
Then fine.
Okay.
Okay, that'll be part of the motion then. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So while we have, just going back to the emails and using personal phones, do we have a policy in place regarding having a county email address on a personal phone? I know I have two separate emails. I have one that's for personal, and I have one that's so I can still reach my county email on my phone, right? Is that, do we have a policy that suggests that or that says that that needs to be done?
I don't believe there's anything that specific.
I wonder if it's something at some point to be considering, just because of the amount of potential requests for data that could come out. I don't know, I mean, maybe that's something that Brian could look into for us too, because I know on mine that we, you know, it was important to have a separate, it was suggested that I have a separate, even though it's on one phone, any county-related email goes to a county email address, and my personal is separate. You know, so I wonder if we should maybe look at something like, requiring something like that in that event, just to, I mean, you know, Steve, we've talked about in the past that the cost of a data request can be significant. And I'm sure county employees wouldn't want to have to have their personal email gone through to look for what is supposed to be county stuff. So I think it might be worth our looking into, Darren, whoever wants to, I think that's, we should look at that. And that would, I mean, that's going to protect the county, and it's going to protect the individual.
Are you saying that you want phones issued to everybody then?
No, 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 no. No, I'm just saying, Commissioner Gross, if you only have one cellphone, and it's your personal cellphone.
Yes.
And you elect to receive county email on that personal cellphone, that county email should have its separate setup within your cellphone.
Outlook, okay, it was just Outlook, I guess, so, okay.
But wouldn't that be the case all the time anyway?
Usually, but within Outlook, you can have multiple email accounts.
I see.
Not just your work, you could have your personal outlook.com or Gmail account tied to it as well, kind of a shared inbox, but, but yeah, that's a good point. And to add to that, any, you know, the Outlook app we use, if employee terminates employment, we can do what's called a selective wipe. So when they leave the county, we disable the counter, delete it. We can not wipe the entire phone. If it's a personal phone, we just wipe that selected Outlook email account off the phone, and contacts and things like that that are tied back to the county.
Okay.
I'm just suggesting that we check into that.
Very good, Rory.
Thank you.
Okay, we request approval to implement Earn Sick and Safe Time. Darren?
He must want something today, he's all spiffed up.
I think I know why Commissioner Mojo isn't here today. She doesn't want to sit through Earn Safe and Sick Time again. We've sat through this during two PICA meetings already. Yeah, and so, as you probably know, you've heard of Earn Sick and Safe Time, that the legislation passed this year, and this is going to affect all of our employees. It affects employers throughout Minnesota because it applies to everybody. The only people that it doesn't apply to is independent contractors and some construction workers. And so to review it briefly on what this new law does for us, it mandates that at least one hour of sick leave for every 30 hours of work. So our full-time and part-time employees, they already get the allotted accrued sick leave, so we don't have to worry about them in that regard. But as you know, anybody that's below a .5 FTE, meaning our seasonal, our temporary, and our variable hour, they don't get sick time at this time. And so this new law will require us to pay them one hour, or give them one hour of sick leave for every 30 hours of work. They can have a maximum of 48 hours per year and no more than 80 hours total. They can have a maximum of forty-eight hours per year and no more than eighty hours total. There can be three methods of earned, sick and safe time. You can either do the accrual method, kind of like what we do now, that every, uh, full-time employee gets three point seven hours of, of vacation and sick, and sick time. You can front-load the whole forty-eight hours, uh, at the beginning of the year. And then at the end of the year, you would pay out whatever is not used. And the third method is you could front-load all eighty hours with no payout at the end of the year. Um, and I'll get back to those in a minute on what our recommendation is. The, uh, the sick leave must be paid out at the rate that they're already making, so if they're making twenty dollars an hour, they would have to be paid out at twenty hours, at twenty dollars an hour as well. And you must work at least eighty hours per year to be eligible for this, this program. The leave, uh, is very generous when it comes to what they can use it for. Uh, there's, there's three different categories, basically. They can use it for their employee's own mental and physical illness. They can use it for their family members' mental or physical illness. They can use it for absence due to domestic assault, stalking, sexual abuse or counseling. They can also use it for emergency closures of the workplace, schools and daycares. And also when determined by a health authority due to infection of others. And that, I think what they threw that in there for is like when we had COVID, you could use it for, for that as well. If you look at your, um, insert there, it's kind of a fact sheet, it has the, um, looks like this. That lists all the family members that you can use this for. So this is greatly expanded from what our personnel policy is on what we, what we can use sick leave for now. Um, I won't read through the list, there's, there's twelve different topics on here, but it, it includes grandparents, aunts, uncles, nephews, nieces, um, basically everybody. And then the catch-all is the very last one there, it says up to one individual annually designated by the employee. So basically, everybody that you could use this for, but you can only use that for the first forty-eight hours. We must include this balance of earned, used and the balance of the, uh, sick leave for these employees on their pay stub already. We do that, of course, for our full-time and part-time people, um, but we would have to add this to all our variable hour temps and seasonal people as well. Right now, we have one seasonal employee and we have a hundred and forty-six variable hour employees. So it's going to be, um, those people that are, that are going to be gathering this new accrued sick leave. Um, a lot of those are in juvenile detention, it'll probably impact their department more than anybody else. There is, uh, let's see, we have to provide notice to all employees, no, no later than January first of twenty twenty-four. And also all new hires have to get notification of this new sick leave. There's no requirement to pay out earned, sa, sick and safe time when somebody leaves. So, uh, you know, a, as you know, with our policy now, you have to have a certain amount of sick leave and be here five years and then we pay out sick leave into a healthcare savings plan. At this point for the E S S T, we don't have to do that. But if they, if we rehire them within a hundred and eighty days, then we have to give them back their E S S T when they left. And that would probably impact more our seasonal workers than anything else. You can require documentation, uh, after three, three days of being out from the, from the employee, like we do with our personnel policy as well, uh, right now. So we do require that. And if somebody says, I'm using my earned, safe and sick time, then, uh, after three days, we can request a doctor's note saying what, what, why they, why they're using that. Um, I ran some numbers from last year and our variable hours, uh, people and what I found out was that, let's see. The average hours worked for a variable hour employee in twenty twenty-two was three hundred and eighty-one hours. So we're not talking, a lot of people aren't ever going to get to that forty-eight hours per year. If they're getting forty-eight hours per year, then they should probably be a part-time employee with benefits and everything else, because that, that equates to about a point six to point seven person. So if we were to take the average of three hundred and eighty-one hours, that comes out to twelve point seven hours of E S S T per, um, per variable hour employee. So we're not talking a ton at that point. So one of the, the, if you look, uh, also, I think, I included in your packet, to get this up and running before January first, um, I have a page in there that says decisions and recommendations to be made for E S S T. And really, there's three things that we need to know from the board so that we can set up our system to accommodate this new, uh, leave that our employees will be getting. Uh, the first question is which accrual method do you want to use? Um, the, the, they accrue so much, one hour per thirty hours of work? Or the forty-eight hours front-loaded with payout at the end of the year, or the eighty hours of front-loaded with no payout at the end of the year? Our recommendation is to accrue this E S S T time, uh, for every hour worked. So what that means is for every hour that a variable hour or temporary or seasonal employee works, they would get point zero three, 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 four hours of sick leave, which then equates to the one hour per thirty hours of, of work. So that would be the recommendation from, from the pick. This has been through the pick twice already. And, uh, so I think the recommendation from the pick was to use the accrual method. Um, it, it, and when they leave employment, they would not, to, we, there would be no payout, uh, using that method. Um, so I don't know if we want to go through and vote on each one of these recommendations or just go through all of the, all of the decisions and then, and then do the recommendations final?
I do have one question to that last point. Um, if they leave, they aren't pa, paid out.
They are not paid out.
Right. But if they come back within a calendar year?
Within a hundred and eighty days.
Yep. Within a hundred days, they pick up where they left off.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
Um, does it get to the point though, on the temporary, I, I understand the other pieces, but on the variable or the, is there a point where they will get high enough to the fact that they are gone and they will, they are leaving for, until the next year or whatever the case? I'm thinking of seasonal.
These no more than anything else. Yeah. So, so let's say if somebody came and they got, uh, sixteen hours of paid, or earned, sick, safe time. And they left and then they came back a hundred and sixty days later, they would, we would re-put that sixteen hours of E S S T back into their bank. So that year that they came back, they could still only get up to forty-eight hours per year. But like I said, if, if it's a true seasonal or variable hour or, um, temporary, most likely they're not going to get to that forty-eight hours.
Okay, that helps. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Ms. Chair?
Yes.
I think maybe we ought to go through all three of these.
All three? Certainly.
And, uh, whatever motion is put out there would address this collectively.
Certainly. Um, so the second question is, um, when will the first forty-eight or eighty hours of sick leave be designated as E S S T? Or does the employee get to pick when to use E S S T and when not to use E S S T? So as you saw, there's a laundry list of things that the employee can use E S S T for and a laundry list of family members that they can use E S S T for. And I know Steve and I kind of have a different opinion on this because what some of the counties are doing and what the Department of Labor has said that we can do is that we use the first forty-eight hours of leave, of sick leave, and we designate is, that is their earned, safe and sick time. So no matter what they're using it for, whether it's themselves, their family members, uh, their school closings, whatever the case may be, the first forty-eight hours is designated as E S S T hours. Now, I'm going to switch gears a little bit and what we're talking more about now is our full-time and part-time employees. Because they can also use this forty-eight hours of E S S T for this laundry list of reasons and family members. And so if we were to say, try to track, you know, we're going to use E S S T this time, but we're not going to use it that time, it becomes a little bit more difficult to, to track. And I'm going to use it for my niece this time, but I'm going to use it for myself next time, or the, you know, when schools are closed, I'm going to use it for that. So, uh, many of the counties that I've talked to, they are saying, okay, whenever, whatever you use your first forty-eight hours of sick leave for, that's going to be your first forty-eight hours of E S S T. Now, to, to Steve's point, and, and I also can see why this makes sense, is that maybe we don't want to use our whole forty-eight hours of E S S T on the first forty-eight that we're doing. Because under our policy, if I'm sick in February, I can use my own sick leave for that reason and not use, and not touch any of my forty-eight hours of E S S T. But then come, um, let's say November of next year, the, uh, and let's say I take sick leave throughout the year. But then come November of next year, the schools are closed for two days, then I would use E S S T for those two days and then I would only use, you know, sixteen hours of my E S S T rather than using the first forty-eight hours. So that's the other decision that we have to make. And that's more of a policy thing more than anything else because, um, the, the accrual piece of this, I need for, just so that we can set up the, uh, HR payroll system properly to be ready for January first of, of twenty twenty-four.
Can I just jump in here real quick?
Yep.
So when we were originally talking about this, we were talking about that, that what's new about this is it's, it, it's for employees who are less, who aren't full-time, that are less than point five or variable hour.
Right, right.
So what's, what's different about this for, as you were just explaining it for, because the full-time employees do the, they don't get additional?
No, they don't, they don't get additional, but, but they still get the opportunity to use E S S T time for these conditions and family members.
Right. So, so our current sick policy, there's, there's a defined qualification.
Correct.
And in this one, that, under the first forty-eight hours, that defined is broader.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
So. Now, when it, when it comes to. When it comes to, and, and, and now I'm talking about our full-time people here, okay, just so that we, so when it comes to our full-time people, um. No matter which one they use, they still have the opportunity to bank long-term sick pay, right? Where they, they could potentially bank long-term and, and then they get, after so many years, they get paid out a certain percentage of that.
Yeah, none of that changes.
None of that changes, right?
No, they're going to accrue the same amount. They're not getting an additional forty-eight hours.
So regardless of whether they've chosen to use the E S S T, uh, you know, with range or for, for, for scope and for qualification purposes.
Right.
That's still, that has no impact on the banking.
No. Yeah, it's, they would still get the same accrual rate. The, and so our current full-time, part-time people, they're meeting the requirements of the one hour per thirty hours work. That, because we already give them that and they, they're above and beyond that. It's the variable hours that'll get this new E S S T time. But everybody in the county can use forty-eight hours of E S S T based on those conditions and those identified family members. So I know it's, it's, it's kind of confusing and believe me, I've been trying to figure this out for six months when this first thing came out.
Is it banked differently at the end of the year? You haven't used any E S S T time.
Right.
Uh, you're, you're, maybe, maybe not even sick leave. End of the year, there's a proportion that's going to be banked?
Yep.
Is it differentiated in any way?
Yeah, so the second year coming up, then, then you would be able to use eight, a total of eighty hours, because you can only use forty-eight hours per year max. And then you can have only a total of eighty hours. So let's say, let's say somebody had five hundred hours of sick leave and you know, sick leave rolls over, we don't, you know, take it or pay it out unless they leave. So let's say somebody had five hundred hours of sick leave at the end of the year, rolling over to January, they would be, they would be able to use eighty, eighty hours of that for E S S T reasons. And then the rest, they would be able to use for what we have in our personnel policy.
And that eighty never gets higher?
No.
It's a max?
It's a max.
Okay.
So, Mr. Go, so going, uh, I think this is dealing with question number two. So, and I think this, so if we're requiring your first forty-eight hours to, in, in a sick pay claim.
Right.
To, to be used as E S S T.
Correct.
That, that could be just, those first forty-eight hours could just be the individual himself.
Correct.
And so then if, then you've used all of that.
Correct.
So then any additional sick hours in that broader scope would be a moot point.
Correct. So if you use, if you use all, let's say you use all forty-eight hours in January and February.
On yourself.
On yourself, then you would be, you would be done with the E S S T for the rest of the year.
Is that what you're suggesting?
That's my suggestion, is we just designate the first forty-eight hours as E S S T, whatever you take for sick leave. Because if you're taking it for sick leave and you look at the list and you look at the family members, I can't think of anything that you would not use E S S T for. Because it's, basically includes everything. So if you use the first forty-eight hours of E S S T in January and February, then come November, December of next year and this, and let's say the school is closed, you've already used your E S S T time. So if the schools were closed, even though that's a reason, you would have already used your first forty-eight hours. So you would have to take vacation for those two days that the school was closed. So that's why this, this gets very complicated in tracking.
But going to the, going to the broader scope, if it, you know, I mean, going to the broader scope of what it's supposed to, what things are still supposed to be eligible for. You know, uh, does, should the employee have that ability to say, well, I'm going to use, you know, I, I was sick two days, sixteen hours for Kevin?
Right.
Okay, and then the, and then, um, a month from now, I designate item number twelve on there and my neighbor's sick.
Right.
If I've, if you've used a whole forty-eight hours upfront, uh, for yourself.
Right.
And all those other designations are gone.
Correct.
And I, I, I don't know what is right or what isn't tonight.
What, what, what's the downside for the county if we allow the employee to indicate, to designate which, 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 uh, qualification they're, they're using?
Yeah, I think more or less it's going to be a tracking nightmare and administratively, because then we'd have to figure out, okay, you used eight hours in January, then you used sixteen hours of regular sick leave in June. And now you used another twenty-four hours in November and we're going to designate that as E S S T. It gets very muddled on how many hours of E S S T you have left. And, and I'm not saying that can't be done. I think it's just very much more difficult to, to track it.
And, and I just have one more. So are there any implications from managerial rights when it, when it comes, when it comes to this? I mean, I, I mean, if you're going to, um, you know, if you're going to be having somebody request time off to take care of others and if, you know, obviously if they haven't used their forty-eight hours, it's, I guess it's law, but.
The, the law is very generous on the employee side, meaning you would have to have a very good reason to deny them using their E S S T. It's, I, I kind of equate it to. It's, I, I kinda equate it to like F M L A.
Sure.
In, in that regard. So it's very generous towards the employee.
I guess I was just looking towards the potential burden on somebody trying to manage their staff and time, I guess, but...
Right, I totally agree.
Well, variable hour employee doesn't have a choice of what they take, 'cause they only get...
Right.
They only get so much, yeah.
They only get E S T.
They only get, they only get the forty-eight hours per year.
So they don't have a choice whether it be E S T time or sick leave time.
Right.
'Cause they have no sick leave.
They, yeah, they would have the forty-eight hours. If, if they earn that much, they would have the forty-eight hours of sick leave, and of that forty-eight hours, they could use it for any of these, these items.
Only people that don't earn it is, there's five employees in the county that don't earn.
Yeah, there's five that don't earn it at all.
Okay, very good, we got that straight.
They, they exempted the commissioners from this program, so, sorry, sorry about that.
Okay, Paul, then.
So going back here, um, to use your words, your nightmare.
Yeah.
Um, do you have any idea, uh, what Wilmington, Duluth, Minneapolis, St. Paul are currently doing?
Um, I do not, uh, I think I read somewhere where a couple of them had to change their, their policy a little bit to comply with the new, the new law. But I do not know what they are doing.
Yeah, and maybe, well, I'll just say it, um, I'm really torn on this one, because I think the other way, way is the intent of the law. Uh, that's my feeling, and, uh, yet at the same time, the accountability part of it, but, um, yeah, I, I, I don't know. I'm leaning that they should have that choice, I guess.
Yeah.
That's, that's where I am, but I don't know, if...
I am, I am too as well.
I mean, it's...
And it seems to me a first-line supervisor's responsibility be to validate the legitimacy of claiming it either way.
Yeah.
And, uh...
Another thing, we can ask an employee when they call in sick, what's wrong with you, can we?
Technically, you're not, you shouldn't be able to do that. Like, they, they don't have to tell you, oh, I'm, I'm having a mental breakdown, or I'm sick, or I have an appointment, or a doctor's appointment.
We could ask them which fund this is coming out of.
You can't ask them that.
And if they say it's, it's gonna be coming out of their E S S T, okay, who's it for? Is that a legitimate line?
Um, yeah, the, the, um, there is a form that, that was sent to us through H R channels that is a template of a, um, what they're using it, which category they're using it for. So it doesn't go into a lot of detail of, you know, who's sick, and why are they sick, and what's wrong with them type thing, but it says, okay, I'm using it for, um, my own personal use, or I'm using it for a family member, you know, so there is a form that we can fill. But I would, I would have to look back to see if they have to fill that form out every time, or only after the three consecutive?
But how, how would you, if I can, uh, how, going, again, going back to bullet point number twelve, how would you ever know that if you don't ask?
Right, and, and that's some of the, um, questions in the H R channels, is, like, when do they get to designate that person? You know, and it says, I think, once a year, um, I don't...
Yeah, they have to designate it once a year.
Once, once a year, so can they change that person throughout the year? Or when do they designate it? Do they designate it on January first, or during open enrollment? So there's, so there's still some questions out there that haven't been answered by the, the legislation.
Well, I think the one that's gonna use the most, or, that, be, maybe, can be a sick child, I mean, you as the neighbor, I think it's a sick child.
Sure, yeah.
I, I know you use that.
I use the neighbor going to point, point twelve.
I know, I understand.
Right.
And, but yet, at the same time, I can see the true practicality of if it's a sick child, and now it's gone, you know, and then, I don't know.
Yeah. It's, it's a difficult situation.
It, it seems to me that the intent of the law was to give flexibility to the employee to determine, uh, which of those is done. So, um... And I, I apologize, so, so the, how, how about when it comes to, we have, we have certain, for example, twenty-four-hour positions, where they, uh, they might... Is, is this all based on eight-hour shifts, or?
Um, no, so for instance, if somebody is, um, let's say a variable hour is scheduled to work on a Saturday, and they are scheduled to work twelve hours, then they call in sick, and they wanna use E S S T time. We would have to pay them for those twelve hours that they were scheduled, scheduled to work. So whatever, whatever they were scheduled to work is what we would have to pay them.
Provided they...
Provided they were on the schedule. They, they, if they aren't on the schedule, and they just say, hey, I'm sick today, pay me my eight hours, they can't do that. If, but they have to be scheduled, and then they call in sick and say...
They still would've had to earn that much time.
Yeah, yeah, whatever's in their bank.
Like, if you hire them on Monday, and then the next Saturday, they want twelve hours of time if they haven't earned it?
No, no, they can't, they wouldn't get that.
Steve, do you have a...
I was gonna do the same.
You wanna chime in here?
Oh, I, I think, I mean, we, Darren and I have talked in nausea on this. Uh, and I think that the point that has been brought up by a couple of U S commissioners, I think, is, has been my position of, of just an awareness. Uh, I think from a simplicity standpoint, forty-eight hours, uh, and the first forty-eight hours utilized, uh, if AMC, legislature, Department of Labor is saying that's, that's good, but I think the second piece of that goes to the intent that Commissioner Kravonoff talked about, is, if we have those situations where, uh, Kevin uses it for Kevin time, right, and then where I think a, a big piece and intent of the legislation was, is addressing it for, for employees who don't have the ability when their, when their daycare closes, or last year when we had eleven storms, uh, and, and right now, our, our, for example, our, our inclement weather policy says it's up to our employees whether they feel that, if they wanna come into work, they'll now have the ability to say, I'm not coming into work, I'm gonna use the E S S T time. And so I think the, 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 the position from the board is if, uh, if we do it based on the recommendation, uh, that, that's provided here, um, as a board, you're, you're going to have employees that are in that position later in the year, after using, um, E S T time, if they're required to do that, when it could've been utilized under our current policy, you, you're, you're gonna have staff that are gonna be frustrated.
It, what, what occurs to me in looking at this, um, the only, and I, I, I know, Darren, you probably got a, 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 a software nightmare ahead of you, I'm setting it up. But first-line supervisors should be the point of contact, they should at that point ask.
Right.
And if the employee said, can't or won't tell you which it is, it's fine, it comes out of E S S T time. If they designate they want it out of their regular sick leave and tell you it's for them, or anyone that's qualified under our policy on sick leave.
Right.
Then that, that's how it should be entered on the worksheet, or on the timesheet. But if they, if they can't or won't indicate to you, I think you need to give management the opportunity just to say, okay, it's gonna be, uh, S S T time, because they're not telling us who this is for, or how they're using it, it must fall under the broader category. But, um, I've, I've gotta agree with, with Steve and, and Commissioner Campbell, that we have to, we're in the position here of trying to anticipate, or evaluate legislative intent.
Right.
And I think this broader category was what the legislature intended. The fact that it's cumbersome, maybe even poorly written, uh, is, is not a factor, we have to implement it to the best of our ability. And I would, I, I would strongly think that using, uh, an employee's indication of which fund, or which pool they want it to come out of, and if they can't or won't indicate that, that management will designate it as E S S T time if such time is available. I think that's kind of, seems to make the most sense to me.
Steve, uh, and, and Darren, when, have you, uh, have you had this discussion in any of your management meetings about this topic?
Yes, we have.
And in regards to item number two, was there discussions into item number two of the three in the back that you have, was?
I think it goes to, to Darren's point, I think that, that especially for the larger departments, I think there's a concern on the management portion of whether it'll be cumbersome or not to, um, to have those conversations. Um, you know, Darren talked about, you know, not all the time when an employee calls in sick for themselves, do they get a supervisor? They may get, leave a voicemail, or send an email.
Right, or text message.
And, and to Darren's point, you know, having some, having some document, um, you know, a template that he talked about, I think would be beneficial. The challenging part is, again, making sure the employee fills it out, um, yeah, and, and so...
Right.
But I do, I mean, I think from our, our discussions, I think that was the, the concern, there's a concern about for those larger departments of, of that communication part, and how do we, how do we track that?
I don't think there is a situation, I don't know why a po, employee wouldn't wanna use the E S S T time and save their sick leave time.
Mm-hmm. Well, yeah, I guess the, my opinion would be that they would wanna save their E S S T time for, you know, November, December of the next year.
But they can always use their vacation time at that time.
Yeah, if they, if they had used up all their E S S T time prior to that, then they would have to use vacation.
And that was my one other question that I had, too, going to the, so under the, uh, when I look at your document here, it's what can the leave be used for? There are certain things that are wellness-related, and there are certain things that don't have anything to do with that, for example, winter storms, or...
Right.
Something like that, so in this particular case, that, would the employee have the option? For example, if we had a storm closure day, you know, right now, we, you know, we, we suggest employees stay home, if it's, you know, if the sheriff puts out a no travel, I, you know, if that's in our policy right now, right?
Right.
How that works. But did, do, under this, then, do they still have the option of choosing whether they wanna use vacation time or sick time in this particular case, or is it, are they right away, or they...
Well, this, this gives them the opportunity to use sick time, if we, if we close for the day, like we did last year.
Right now, because right now, they couldn't use sick time.
Correct, they would have to use...
This way, they have the option, that's my, that was my question, it's the option of using the S S...
Right, because one, one of the, one of the, uh, conditions is if your place of business closes, if your daycare closes, and if your, uh, school closes, you can use E S S T time, whereas before, we would've said you had to use vacation, 'cause you're not technically sick at that point.
Well, I know it's a nightmare from the management standpoint, but I, I, you know, the more I think about this, and you think about a lot of our young people, our young people who have kids, and if we force them to use that first forty-eight hours, when it, when it might be, uh, just the employee sick, but then when you get into that November, December, and now all of a sudden, you have a massive outbreak of illness, and your daycare closes, now, now they've already used all that time.
Right, right.
Right, so I, I, I don't know, I'm kinda leaning towards flexibility for the employee.
I just feel if an employee has used up all the E S T time and the vacation time, come November, December, they don't have any time left, I think we've got other problems.
True.
It should've been taken...
The, the one thing that's a little scary is that they don't exempt anybody from this. So you could technically have the schools and daycares closed, and have employees staying home, which could include our correctional officers, our highway maintenance guys, our police force, and sheriffs, and deputies, they could conceivably call in and say, hey, my, my kid's daycare is closed, I can't come in today. So there, even with COVID, they, they had a cutout for safety-sensitive people and emergency personnel, that this, this doesn't apply to them, because they, they have to be there to work. This, this E S S T law does not exempt anybody from being able to do that.
So there, there is no essential services, so to speak?
There's no essential services clause in it.
Can I ask one other part of this, we haven't really talked about it all? Can you tell me how does the safe time work? I wanna know a little more about that.
The safe, safe time?
Yeah.
Um...
How is that addressed?
Yeah, that is, and we, we actually have safe time in our personnel policy now, which was put into law a couple of years ago, and basically, that's when the, that it has to do with, if you're a victim of sexual assault, domestic battery, um, domestic assault, any of those type of things, it would now be included in your sick time. So that doesn't change too much, because that's already in our personnel policy.
Okay.
That was added a couple of years, so what they've done is they've lumped that into this E S S time as well, because not everybody probably, well, according to the law, you had to add it, um, I forget which year it was, but it's been since I've been...
And is that somehow documented? I mean...
On why they're taking sick leave?
No.
Not necessarily.
Safe time.
Safe time, no, it's not doc, I mean, it's documented as in, I'm, I'm gonna use eight hours of sick leave. Now, it could be for domestic assault, or it could be for...
I'm just trying to keep it private, I guess.
Yes, yes.
One other item, they say, for all the variable employees earning over eighty hours a year, you don't know that till they go over eighty hours.
We can set stuff up in our H R payroll system to, to limit it to eighty hours. So just like we, we have a, a total of two hundred and seventy hours of, or two hundred and forty hours of vacation, it'll, the system will tell us if anybody's over two hundred and forty hours. So it does, it does put a limit on, we can set it up so that it limits out at eighty hours.
I mean, how many, how many variable employees do we have that work under eighty hours? Do we have any?
That work under eighty hours?
Yeah, if they work under eighty hours, how do you know when to start?
Well, that's eighty hours per year.
Right.
Yeah, so, so if they work a couple of weeks at nineteen hours a week, which is what we're, what we want the max to be for variable hours, you know, they're gonna go over that eighty hours pretty quickly per year.
I was just wondering, do we have any variable employees under eighty hours?
Potentially, like voting, right? Our lower-y staff, then they come in for elections.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
They may not reach that eighty.
Yeah, actually, um... Yeah, we had, um, last year in twenty twenty-two, we had forty-eight employees that did not eat, meet the eighty-hour minimum requirement.
Because then we know not to give, we know not to give those employees earned leave every two weeks, or, you know, every payday.
Technically, Mr. Chair, because if, with the boards, with the board's action on doing the accruals, they would never be subject to payout, um, and so, um, they wouldn't, they...
Well, no one is subject to payout.
They would not, they would not get a payout. What, what we would probably do is, because it's very different, it's very difficult to, to treat two, two similar employees differently in the system. You know, if, if you're a full-time employee, then you get three-point-seven hours of vacation, and se, and three-point-seven hours of sick leave. But now, if we wanna say, okay, now this employee is only gonna get this much, it's, the system isn't set up for that. But if somebody came here, let's say they worked nineteen hours for two weeks, they would accrue that, that, it would be so small.
Right, it'd be small.
Because they wouldn't even hit the thirty hours, you know...
But nobody gets a payout from this.
But nobody would get a payout from this.
Whether you went over eighty hours a year or not.
Right.
You don't get a payout anyway.
Right.
But to your, but to your question, Mr. Chair, technically, there, there could be some hours built up before they hit eighty, that the supervisor, department head would have to say, you're not eligible yet, because...
So if they, if they worked thirty hours, they would have one hour of sick leave. If they left, they wouldn't get that paid out.
Hey, but... If that employee says, okay, I'm sick, before the end of the year, could they use that one hour, even though they weren't eligible to earn it yet, till they get eighty hours in?
To get, to get up to eighty hours?
Yeah.
Technically, they could.
Don't they have to work eight, what he's asking? They have to work eighty hours first.
Correct.
Before they could use it, so the question, the answer, the question would be, no, they wouldn't be able to just burn it, because...
You gotta have eighty hours in before you can use any, any type of sick.
Correct, correct, you have to, you have to work the eighty hours, and then, then they could use the one point...
Okay.
Two hours, yeah.
Darren, is there, in Civics Plus, is there a, I know it, it's, you know, there's different... there's different add ons that we can purchase through Civics Plus.
Mm hmm.
If the board were to move forward with having two two separate, I guess, areas, the E S S T and this ninety that regular sick time, would there be something that the board could just mean that would allow that to maintain easier?
Not not to my knowledge. A lot of the counties are having this exact same problem is their their systems aren't necessarily set up this way. I've I've had a work order out for several weeks now with UKG to try to set this up. And that's why I had to bring it to the board first so that we know how to set it up. And if we agree on the accrual method, then that's all I need as far as setting up the UKG. And what they do is they go in there and and set it up so that if if a variable hour works one hour, they would automatically get point zero zero point zero three 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 four hours of sick leave in their bank. So it's it's a it's a calculation within the system that we have already.
But and just to clarify in our discussions for the board's understanding, when it comes to the variable hours, we're looking at accruing.
Correct.
When it comes to full time, employees who have forty eight hours or more would have that available to them January first.
Correct, correct. And if they don't have, let's say, some employees on January first, let's say they've been here five years, but they only have twenty four hours of sick leave, then they would only have twenty four hours of of sick leave available to use for E S S T. Now, they would they would continue to accrue it, but a lot of people, some people, not a lot, some people use it as they accrue it. So you just have to track to make sure they don't go over forty eight hours per year using that.
So I'm Mr. Chair, I'm assuming these these recommendations were made based on the pick committee? So.
Well, I I took these recommendations to the pick committee.
Oh, you. Okay, these were recommendation.
I took to the.
Okay, okay. And did did they refer?
Well, I think we I think we agreed on the the first thing on the accrual rates. I think that was an agreement. On the second question, I don't know if we ever came to a total agreement on that.
Yes, I can see where that would be.
Yeah.
So my so my, okay, thank you. My my other question is, if we don't get this right, we're going to hear about it later.
Probably.
Bargaining units.
Probably.
And so so that was my that was my question. Right now, there's language in our bargaining units that deals with sick pay, but it doesn't incorporate this because this is a new law that came in, right?
Correct.
So how do we do we go back and is it does is this all done outside of bargaining units?
Yeah, I don't. I haven't heard of any counties that are going back to all the unions and rebargaining some of this. Number one, a lot of it has to do with the variable hour seasonal intent, and they're they're not they're not union.
But there still is that issue in terms of item number two that we're talking about.
Yes, yes. And and
You might get a.
Right. And and I and if we were to go with the first forty eight as E S S T hours, I think we're on solid ground on that because that's what the D O L says we can do. So I think if we if it was grieved, we would have the D O L's opinion on our our side. If we if we go the other way, then.
I can see from one standpoint for us, you know, the recommendation that you made for item number two would make make sense. But I I just don't know if that's the intent of the law. When you when they put forward those, you know, you know, so when you consider that, I just don't know.
Well, I think the the intent of the law was to give people that didn't normally get sick leave, giving them sick leave. I think that that was the real intent of the law, and and it had to do with the restaurant and hotel and services businesses where they don't get sick leave.
Oh, I see.
And I think and and even AMC said.
AMC and League of Minnesota cities lobbied extremely hard to to exempt governmental entities from this, but the legislature legislature did not do that.
Because we're we're very generous when we talk sick leave and vacation. We give all that already. The the intent of the law was to give people like our variable hours.
But the legislature expanded what could be considered.
Yep, yep, exactly.
And that's the intent piece.
Right.
Looking ahead at question three. I and that's an assumption I've been going. We would only apply the standards that are identified in E S S T legislation to the hours that are accrued on E S S T. We're not going to change our county policy.
That's the recommendation, right. I mean, we could conceivably just open up our HR policy to include all twelve people and all conditions. And I think that would be a nightmare. So the recommendation is for the first forty eight hours, you can use it for these this many things. But after you've used it for this many things, and you've used all your forty eight hours, now you can use it for what we currently have in the H HR.
Whether they make that designation themselves or we mandate it.
Right.
They're they're limited to the broader.
For the first forty eight hours.
Yeah. Looking down the road, the most you can use, though, most you can get accrue is eighty hours.
Correct. So you can carry over up to. So let's say you have forty eight hours the first year, and you carry them all over.
Right.
So then you you continue to accrue the second year. You can accrue up to eighty hours.
And that's it.
And then if you get to eighty hours, your accruals stop. And then the next year, those eighty hours would go to the.
And you wouldn't accrue anymore the next year then?
Correct, correct.
Very good. Go ahead. Go for it.
Paul.
Turn your microphone.
Thank you. I'll move forward with the motion then. Following recommendation number one, use the accrual method, point zero three three four hours of sick leave accrued for every one hour of work up to a total of forty eight hours per year, equates to one hour of sick time for every thirty hours work. Full time, part time employees already meet this threshold on threshold based on current accrual rates. Number two, employees will not have to designate the first forty eight eighty hours of sick leave as E S S T leave. And toward the recommendation three, allow only those family members in conditions to be used for the first forty, sorry, forty eight eighty hour of sick leave. After E S S T is exhausted, then employee can only use sick leave according to the personnel policy guidelines.
So which one are you voting for? At most for?
I was going with three.
All three?
He's he's, Mr. Chair, he's made the motion to accept the recommendations on one and three.
One and three.
And in number two, he's not accepting the recommendation. He's stating that the employee would have the ability to utilize the forty eight hours at their at their wishes. You not designate it an automatic use of the forty forty eight hours for your first forty eight hour events.
Could we just clarify that with E S S T time or regular time would be designated by the employee? If they can or won't designate it, it would go to E S S T?
That makes sense. Yeah, I I agree with that.
I would I would second the motion. Use the language on question two.
Yeah.
Is just stated.
Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I I I think I think that's reasonable, what what's being proposed here. The fact of the matter is, is that item number two, I think, is probably the one that would will generate the most discussion amongst employees. And I have a hunch if we didn't do this now, we're going to be asked to do it later in in the format of collective bargaining. And I I just, I think it's following. I think the motion, I think, follows the intent of what the law was supposed to be. I'm going to support the motion.
Okay. Darren, do you understand the motion? And you agree with the motion?
I I've got it written down. I I understand.
Very good. Okay.
And I can always watch this later if I have to.
Okay, Jackie, you got that down, motion down? Way to go, Jackie. Okay. Okay, we've got a motion, and I don't know what it is.
It's a bunch.
I'm sorry. I got a motion on the on the using number one and some of number three, I guess. And Darren agrees to it. So any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I told you that this is why Commissioner Mojo wasn't here. She sat through this twice already.
She's not watching us.
Mr. Chair, I do want to want to just mention, I want to thank Darren and and Anna for the work that they've done. And they have, they've worked a great deal about this. We've, as mentioned, we've had a lot of discussions. And there are, there's a lot of things that aren't clear yet. And and but they've they've done just a great job of getting this to this point. So I appreciate their work.
I think we'll be talking about it more. Okay. Well, you want to stay right there? We'll go to approval of the year end items?
Sure. This is fairly routine. I come to you every this time year. Maybe it's a little later normally. But this is the approval of the year end items. And there's there's six of them right now. Most of them are, you've heard before, each year. The first one would be the grid adjustment for twenty twenty four, recommending three percent increase for all the grids. This is also what we have bargained for and approved through all nine unions. So this would be applying to everybody else that's non-union. And I don't know, do you want to take these one one at a time? I think normally, we take them one at a time.
Yep, let's do that. And and I would note, just for the board's reminder, that that the the preliminary levy was established with three percent included for all of our employees.
Yes, correct.
Mr. Chair, I would move establishing the three percent for all grids for twenty twenty four.
Second. Okay, we got a motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, the second one is meal reimbursement rates. These were last updated in twenty nineteen. Right now, they are currently fifteen dollars for breakfast, twenty dollars for lunch, and thirty dollars for dinner. And like I said, this was updated in twenty nineteen. I should have noted that all of this has been through the pick already. So there was some agreement on all that.
Mr. Chair, I move that we endorse the meal reimbursement rates as stated. Okay, we got a motion to second to to approve the meal reimbursement rates. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the third issue is the per diem rates. Currently, they're at one hundred dollars per day, and that was last updated in twenty fifteen.
Mr. Chair, I move that we keep the per diem rates the same.
Second. And a good motion is second. I guess I'm going to put in my request that per diem rates go to seventy five dollars a day unless the meeting's over four hours, then it's a hundred dollars a day. But we'll vote on this one first. Per diem rates, a hundred dollars a day, we got a motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The next one is IRS mileage rates for twenty twenty four. They haven't been published yet. But in our policy, normally, what we do is we follow the IRS suggested rate. Right now, the twenty twenty three current rate is sixty five point five cents per mile. So I'm assuming that usually doesn't fluctuate more than a couple of cents per.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that our mileage rate follow the IRS guidelines applicable to the twenty three and then for the years twenty four.
Second.
Okay, a motion to second to approve the mileage rate. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The fifth item is the twenty twenty four furlough program. I believe I attached a copy of that. We're requesting no change for the twenty twenty four program. In twenty twenty three, there was one thousand one hundred and three point nine hours of furlough that were used, which equate equated to twenty nine thousand four hundred and fifty six dollars in saved wages as of November twenty second. So it is a beneficial program. I think it is used when needed. And I would recommend approving the same program for twenty twenty four.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we continue the furlough program for twenty twenty four as established.
Second. Okay, we got a motion to second to approve the furlough program as it's been formally previously adopted. All in favor?
Aye. And the last thing, if you recall, during our union negotiations, we bargained for with all the nine unions to reduce the two year steps to one year steps. So the recommendation is to reduce steps eight through twelve to one year instead of two years for twenty twenty, starting in twenty twenty four. The only exception for that would be social workers. They negotiated that they wanted to keep the two year steps during their union contract negotiations. So they would be the only ones that would continue with the two year step, and that's per per their contract. So the so the the one year steps would be for the rest of non-union members.
Okay.
Well, my motion that we reduce the step rates eight through twelve to one year instead of two years, except for the social workers as per their contract.
Thank you.
Second. Do I understand this, that all social workers will not go by this, whether union or non-union?
I'm sorry.
All the social workers not this does not apply to any of the social workers?
Correct, correct. The social worker union contract states that they wanted to keep the two year.
That's for all employees, whether the union or non-union.
Correct.
Okay, very good. Okay, we got a motion to second to adopt the reduced rates for social workers for steps eight through twelve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
I think I have the next one, too. You guys are going to get tired of hearing from me. The the last thing, well, next to the last thing is the drug and alcohol policy. As you know, this passed legislation cannabis cannabis was legalized in Minnesota. And so I went through the drug and alcohol policy. We had to make a few minor changes. Our drug and alcohol policy was already in pretty good shape. And so, as you can see from that, there's a few red lines in and out. The the biggest change, I think, for this is the new legislation identified safety sensitive positions. It's on the last page of the policy. And so those were added, that the testing requirements for these positions, you can do random testing or reasonable suspicion testing. If you're a police officer, if you're working face to face, training, education, supervision, counseling, or consultation, or medical assistance to children, vulnerable adults, patients who receive health care services from a provider for the treatment, examination, or emergency care of the medical, psychiatric, and mental conditions, a position requiring commercial driver's license, which falls under the federal federal laws, and a position of employment funded by a federal grant. So if we have one position that is fully funded by a federal grant, as you know, cannabis is still described as a a an illegal drug in in the federal realm, but not in Minnesota, and any other position for which state or federal law requires testing of a job applicant or employee for cannabis. So right now, I guess, there's there's not a lot of change to our drug and alcohol policy. We just wanted to add that that the legislation clarified on the safety sensitive positions. And the C D L and all that, that's separate. They have their own drug and alcohol policy at the highway department for C D L drivers. And they they do do random testing. This has been looked at by Mr. Melton, and I think you were okay with the way it was worded. This has been looked at by Mr. Melton, and I think you were okay with the way it was worded.
I have a question on that item four, item D, excuse me, in the first page of that. Item D, it says, "Safety and Perform His Job Duties." You just added jo, is that duties added to job? On the bottom of the page, D. Page one.
Under, on the first page? Or the second?
That'll be the first page after.
The.
First page of the policy. Under D, on the bottom, last line.
Mood alter, means change in behavior, ability to safely and efficiently perform his or her job duties, or possesses a threat to the safety of the employees or others.
We put the double job duties, okay? Is that what we're doing there?
Yeah.
Is that what we want?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Any motion, the.
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we make the changes to the drug and alcohol policy as outlined in this redlined document.
I'll second.
You got a motion, the second, to adopt the policy, the updated drug and alcohol policy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Most.
And the last thing is on the year-end piece. I was asked to give an update on the referral program. Actually, it's, I think it's been pretty successful. We, we established this on April 8th of 2023, and since that time, under full-time and part-time, we've had 21 full-time or part-time employees that have been recruited. We've had 22 employees that have acted as recruiters. 11 of those employees have been paid out their first payment for a total of $4,750. Five employees have been paid out their second payment for a total of $1,750, for a total payout to date of $6,500 for full-time and part-time employees. Since that time, three have left employment for our variable hours. They get $250 after their 40 hours, uh, 400 hours, and $250 after eight hour, 800 hours of work. Since the April 8th of 2023, we've had 51 employees that have been recruited. Forty-three of those employees have acted as recruiters. 16 employees have been paid out their first payment, which equals $4,000. Six employees have been paid out their second payment as a, for a total of $1,500, for a total payout to date of $5,500. Since that time, 10 have left employment. So we, the, the total payout for both for full-time and part-time and variable hour employees that have been accrued, recruited, and the recruiters that get the payout was $12,000.
I appreciate those employees who've participated in that program.
Yep. So it seems to be working fairly well. I guess we, we could look at it later on and see if that program should continue or not. I think overall, it's been fairly successful.
We'll move on, does anybody need a break? Okay? You do, okay, we'll take a short, we'll take a short break.
Looked good up there?
Yeah, we're on, okay. Next thing is the approval of the broadband funding border of order for grant application utilized the American Rescue Plan Act funds.
Steve? Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is just a little bit of cleanup from the action that this board took last week. As Red River Communication went through their grant application, there was actually a requirement that, that when funding was provided by, by a government entity, that a resolution was also attached to that. And so within your packet, there's Resolution 2023-32, again, addressing $5,000 for each, each successful application. This resolution's been reviewed by the county attorney's office, and that, that I'd yield for any questions.
Mr. Chair, I move Resolution 2023-32.
Second.
You got a motion, the second, to approve the Resolution 2022, 2023-32? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll take the additional alternative item, which is the approval of front-loading 40 hours of vacation when hiring law enforcement officers not to exceed 96 hours in the first 12 months.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, commissioners, I'll try and make it quick for you. I won't use E S S T during my, during my presentation here, but as you're aware, it's been, it's been quite difficult lately to recruit new law enforcement officers, not only just the sheriff's office, but just in general across the state of Minnesota and even across the nation. And several other agencies across the state, the nation, are trying to come up with unique ways to try and attract new hires. Back several years ago, there used to be a hundred, or hundreds of applicants for maybe one or two positions. Now there is hundreds of departments looking for the very few applicants out there, so it's kind of a complete flip-flop. So what we're requesting today is just a front-load 40 hours of vacation for new law enforcement hires. They would not exceed the 96 hours that they would, that a person accrues throughout the year. I believe Darren would make a change in the UKG system for the multiplier, but just to offer that as a little bit of an incentive to see if we can attract more, more applicants. And for that, after that, I would yield for any discussion, or if the chief deputy has anything to add.
Okay, any discussion or motions?
Well, I, you know, it's, it seems to me that, I think this is gonna be a growing trend and, and, you know, I think, you know, if you're, if you're looking to get quality and experienced law enforcement officers, to get them to go from one place to another, they're not gonna, they're not gonna do it without.
Yes.
Having a beginning bank of, of time, because, you know, that's.
I was, I would have to agree that anytime, if we're looking for experienced officers, they already got some time built up in their vacation time.
Right.
From their former job, and to switch to a new job and not get any vacation time, I don't think it's the proper thing to do, and I've been wondering why we haven't done this for some time already, but.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve front-loading 40 hours of vacation when hiring law enforcement officers not to exceed the 96 hours in the first 12 months.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, the second, to approve the front-loading of vacation hours. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, if I could just say one thing about the incentive program that Darren was just talking about. I would say as, as law enforcement, we've seen it as a very beneficial program when it comes to hiring. The last officer I know was recruited, or deputy was recruited by one of our other deputies, and hopefully the two next deputies that we have coming on were both recruited by our deputies in-house. So if it does come up for, for question for 2024, we would definitely support keeping that program on board, and we thank you for having it for this year.
Okay.
Well, I, yeah, I think they bring a really, it's helpful when you can have your own people supporting and, and talking about, you know, the quality work that's there, and, and obviously, I think we're, our benefits are, are right there, so.
It has been very helpful.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll go on to committee reports, Paul.
Well, with Thanksgiving, which I hope everybody enjoyed, I only had a couple meetings. So on last Tuesday, the 21st, we had our adult mental health, uh, monthly meeting. Just briefly on that, our presenter, unfortunately, two of them were sick, so that was gonna be with Gull Harbor. They'll, they'll give their spotlight next month. Then we just really had our agency reports from our partners that are part of the LAC, and with updates, so really nothing other than that to report on that meeting. Yesterday, on the 27th, we had our Castle Lake Food Partners Steering Committee that I've been active with. Excuse me, and, and probably the thing to bring about that is, as noted before, on what is called our Action Arm, for several years, as, well, 12 years for that matter, has been First Fridays, which is now officially ended. So we're developing new strategies, and maybe, maybe breaking it up in a few different parts. We'll see where this goes, but certainly focusing on education, peace for the community, with good nutrition in mind. A broader sense of gardening opportunities to make sure that those, not only in our backyards, but community gardens, we support that strong growth and the community getting involved. USDA, USDA is also working with us in the development of grants, and they have a business center. I spoke to this, I think, last month, or from the Food Commission, and about food, uh, food production incentives, and mainly going toward new co-ops, new diversity of culture of foods, those type things. And then the last, we're seeing a, a, a need, I would say that, and, and if nothing else, that we feel a responsibility to make sure that we're given the opportunities for fresh foods that are from our local area to be delivered out and available to people in senior living areas that aren't able to get out or don't have that opportunity. These are normally places that don't have kitchens, so they're, you know, making their own food, so help the seniors. And with that, those were my two meetings.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Come on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only meetings I had, we had two yesterday, and they were, the first one was the withdrawal management detox facility, finance and construction meeting. There's, that, the project is moving along very nicely. I think the report we got yesterday is that probably in the grand scheme of the targeted timeline, that they're probably about two weeks behind, and, and that is primarily due to a period of time in there when they had really wet conditions, and they, that kind of, there was a lot of things they couldn't do when that happened. But they're, at this point, they're back on track. I wanna point out that there's, um, the next change order that's gonna be coming in, one was the omitting of the monument sign from that project, because that's when we decided to move the monument sign from in front of the detox facility to a shared monument sign with the DMV. And so we moved the, that amount from the detox facility project. And so that's gonna be a net deduction of $12,844. And then we did have a, an issue that came up with, in the design, where they had some additional material to raise the parapet height, I think it's, it's like 12 to 18 inches all the way around. And that, that increase is forecast to be about $7,700 rounding. And then there's one last request that we've done, it was on the laundry enclosure. We kinda wanted to have that thing, right now, everything was to be enclosed, and when we look in the future, you know, that building is meant to last a long time, and those appliances don't, and when you go to replace them, you not always are you gonna be able to get the same size? And so we wanted to have some flexibility in there, not have to do a major remodel because of, so they're, they're doing some things to try to have enough room there, but yet have a face, facial thing that makes it look like it's enclosed when it's really, there's room behind it. So that's probably the easiest way to explain that. The area, the roofing, there, the first section of the roof was, was done, and they're expecting to complete the north section by next week. Once that's done, then they will be able to put in the temporary heat inside for doing the, you know, work inside there. So that's, progress is moving along nicely. And then on the DMV, there're not a whole lot to report. They're, uh, they've got the external footings in, and they're, they're doing all the fill back in around all of that area. And then they're, they're working on the deep inside stuff for the plumbing and water that's gonna go into place. And then that project is gonna probably slow down until mid-January when the steel comes in, because they won't be able to do much till the steel comes in. Once the steel comes in, they'll erect that, and I think that's probably about two weeks, and that'll be done. And then they'll start the exterior enclosure of that facility with the hopes of having that up and, and a roof on it prior to the rain season. So you can, so that's, you know, I think that's kind of on a, a good target timeline, you know, when we're looking at October of 2024, hopefully to see that thing. I'm, it's still wishful thinking, I believe, but, but at least it's, it's within reason to, to do. So those, those, both those projects are moving along quite nicely.
I saw a lot of insulation being brought in this morning when I drove by, so.
It's not blowing around?
Must be going up on the roof.
Yeah.
Did the flatwork get poured?
Pardon me?
At the DMV, did the flatwork get poured?
So, Commissioner Krabnoff, the, the flooring is actually gonna, that's actually gonna be done once it, once the building is up. They're gonna do the interior stuff later.
Okay.
When they're, once it's enclosed, they'll leave a portion open, and then they'll allow it to thaw that ground out and, and do it correctly from the inside. It's one of those rare occasions, based on the winter conditions, they'll pour the floor later. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Okay, Dave?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. One meeting for me on Thanksgiving week. November 21st, met with the committee we're putting together to oversee hiring and interviews and hiring of a new director, Director for the Red River Regional Dispatch Center. The committee is gonna be comprised of some of the executive committee, sheriffs, chiefs, and fire chiefs, as well as HR people. Darren was, was with us in this meeting, as was the HR director for the City of Morehead and City of Fargo. In our joint powers agreement, City of Fargo is designated, their HR department is designated to handle HR issues for the dispatch center. So she'll be pretty much involved in this in every step of the way, but the other HR director's gonna be contributing and having some input. We looked at the membership that's gonna address this, and again, that was something the executive committee should be the driver on. As the vice chair of the Board of Authority and Chad Peterson, who's, who's the chair, I'm the vice chair, we're both gonna be participating with, with this group, and we'll take their candidate forward and present it to the Board of Authority, which is the governing body that'll select, make the final selection. So we established some of the position description and salary issues. The job description that exists needs a few not very important changes. Fargo's gonna assist their HR, that's gonna assist in making those changes. We discussed how this is gonna be advertised, and the current salary range is gonna be what we go forward with at this point. There's a process, OmniView, that Morehead uses for executive positions, that we're gonna look into to see if we wanna, wanna use it on this process. There will be probably an initial opportunity for any candidates that we initially identify as potential after the screening to do a virtual interview. That'll save some of the time and trouble of transporting and hotels and everything else if we have out-of-state applicants. We originally, the Board of Authority originally set the timeline on this to be January 1st. That's unrealistic. We realize that now, looking at what we've gotta do, but hopefully, we'll be able to get a new director in there maybe by February. But hopefully, we'll be able to get a new director in there maybe by February. So this is a work in progress. We'll be moving forward on it. I will post the job as soon as it's ready for four weeks. And I'll make sure we get that for our county HR website as well and get, get all this going when, when they have the posting ready. And that completes my report.
Okay. I had two meetings I went to at the Personnel Leadership Committee. And everything about one item was covered already today's meeting. So other than that, there was just a grid placement for maintenance work that Justin Sarm talked about, that he was planning on doing. The next meeting ahead was the Wild Rice One Watershed One Plan meeting yesterday. The items discussed there was there's $391,000 left from last year's, or from the plan this year. And they got approval to extend that into next year. Plus, we're going to get 1.9 million additional for doing funding for projects going on. So that'd be about a little bit over, almost $2 million available. Not quite $2 million available for projects on the One Watershed One Plan, but the Wild Rice. That was the main thing in the meeting there. Our next meeting's scheduled for March 25th. Oh, I did have one more. We had a short meeting for PIC yesterday afternoon, too. And that item was taken care of at today's meeting, too. Very good. That's it. Steve?
I think, Mr. Chair, I participated in the PIC meeting that has, has been addressed on the 21st and the 27th. Also, yesterday, I participated in the DMV Withdrawal Management Owners Meetings that have been addressed. Just for the board's awareness, both Polk and Norman County have now signed the West Central Regional Water District MOU in establishing the water district through the judicial process. And so there'll be some additional conversations on that. And I believe we, the steering committee meets in about another week and a half. And then just a reminder that there's no board meet, meeting next week as the commission will be in the AMC Annual Conference in Minneapolis. So the next time for our citizens that the board will be getting together is December 12th. And of note, it will be a 5:00 PM meeting with Truth and Taxation following that night at 6 o'clock. And with that, that concludes all my report.
Okay, Brian. Darren? Can I get this up to date again? Okay, we're adjourned.